Here, Mayor would you lead us in the vacation please?
Let us stand. Dear kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to come before you to this day. We just ask God that you would give us all the wisdom and the knowledge to make the decisions for this city that we need to do. I pray God that you would keep everyone safe throughout this day through the storms and that we would be kept safe all through the night. And it's in your precious name that we ask all these things. Amen.
Amen.
Come Julie Center please.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All members present, we do have a quorum. I'd like to open this meeting to conduct official business of City of Fort Payne. First item on the agenda today is to approve the minutes from the April 20th regular meeting and the April 27th special call meeting. Anyone had the opportunity to read those? I intend a motion to accept the minutes. Motion by Phillip, second by Lynn. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports. Let's skip committee reports and go right into, was Evan here? He's here, I saw him, right? So Mayor, if you just...
Alright, listen with us and I wanted to present him a key to the city on his recent being drafted to the NFL. And just want to read just a few things about Evan that that's actually amazing. He's a five-year starter at Fort Payne High School. He was first team all-state kicker senior year. He was selected to play in the Alabama Mississippi All-Star game, selected to play in the Under Armour game in Orlando, holds the record for the longest field goal in Alabama high school football with a 60-yard field goal snap holds his senior year. Held eight scholarship offers out of high school. Okay, his college career, he played and started three seasons for the Gators freshman through junior year. He was awarded SCC freshman of the week twice. He was awarded SCC special teams player of the week once. His career stats, 149 out of 150 extra points, that's 99.3 percent. 51 out of 60 field goals, 85 percent, which is first in the SCC history for career field goal percentage. A career field goal long, career-long field goal of 55 yards, 302 total points. And his latest accomplishment is drafted by the Cincinnati Bengals in the 20... It is with great pleasure that I have the opportunity to present him a key to the city of Fort Payne and a certificate. We appreciate you Evan.
Come on get a picture with me. Let's go get a picture.
They're gonna try to celebrate.
It's not every day that you get to say your hometown has an NFL football player.
Walter can't see you. Can't see Johnny either.
Oh no, no, you're fine. I mean, I'd like to thank everybody here that's doing everything for Fort Payne. Showed old Mayor here for a while.
He is pretty old.
I just appreciate everything y'all've done for me and everybody else that's coming through Fort Payne and making this city a city to live in. I mean, you got people coming to visit Lower River Canyon all the time and just making people want to come here. I think you're doing a great job with Fort Payne and I'll always love coming back here and visiting my family and visiting everybody else that's here in Fort Payne. So I'll be forever grateful to call this place my home and whenever somebody asks me where I'm from, I say Fort Payne, Alabama proudly. And if there are any bands or country music, they'll be like, oh, that's where the band is. That's pretty much all that Fort Payne's known for. Heard that's a big part of it, but no, I mean, I'm super blessed to receive this and I appreciate all y'all've done for me and my family and everybody in Fort Payne.
I've known Evan for a long time and his family is dear friends of mine and he is an exceptional young man. And we are very, very proud to call you one of our own.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have to say you're the only reason I ever...
You're around here.
Well, Don and Amber, I remember him kicking balls out in the yard, but I didn't think it would amount to this, so I know you guys are proud too. So for every kick that went too high and landed in places, did he ever break a one down or anything? Cause he's a pretty good kicker over there.
Nope, stayed on target.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, move right along to committee reports. Let's start from Phillip's side. Anything Phillip can come from red court?
I'm gonna give the red court.
Okay.
We're gonna start with Aquatics. Splash Pad opening is to be determined. We have a problem with the pump in between the layer. Pool opening is to be determined. Evan, we're gonna be calling you to do some camps with us, so this is first year, get with me, okay?
For sure, for sure.
Thank y'all for coming.
The pool is still to be determined based on number of lifeguards. Most lifeguards will not be opened seven days a week this year. We are still sitting at about seven lifeguards, maybe about 14, 15. That's so bad news. We're gonna end on some good news and some positives. We have 11 children from our track club that will be going to the ARPA State Track Meet on the 15th and competing for their very first time. So we're really happy about that. This week we start back our Golden Cats program in the day-to-day on the first Wednesday and Bingo on the third Wednesday of each month at nine o'clock. And Silver Sneakers is booming. We had so many new members to that, they actually sent me a letter when I printed the invoice and said, are you sure this number is right? Because it's over a 100% increase for last month. We are finally over the top of the year.
Phillip, was there anything else?
No. Well, yes, there's an item that didn't make the agenda that we need to talk about and that is the meeting the budget for the basketball court.
15,000 for?
Yes, 15,000 for one court.
Lights.
The identification of that court is by the city pool. There's a, I understand a grassy area there that we met and talked about maybe putting an outdoor court right there to where people can come out and play.
Good open area. We felt like that it was a good area centrally located.
Right.
Oh, motion to...
Make a motion to amend.
Motion by John, second by Johnny to amend the budget for this basketball court. All in favor say aye. Sign that paper again. We'll get one, okay? Alright, anything else? Lynn?
We have a meeting with the fire department tomorrow, John and I do. Other than that, we've been working on the basketball courts and with Robin and discussing soccer fields. And what was my other thing? Oh, I guess that's it.
Got some things happening in the police department. I'm gonna let the mayor talk about that. He can, I've been still in his thunder, so I'm gonna let him just thunder away. So, John?
Yeah, we do have some problems that we talked about today of the sanitation department. We're in a position now where we can't get any CDO drivers. This has been going on since we took over the city council anyway. And it's just Patrick has done everything, practically big people. Myself, I've sent three people down there over the last three or four weeks and they just, you know, they all tell me, I can't take the pay cut to come down there to work. We're to the point now where we don't have enough people to run the basic services that we're supposed to be running now. You know, you go to Scottsboro and you make $15 an hour and you can afford to drive there from Fort Payne. We've got some people doing that. So we've had several meetings on this and yesterday we sat down and looked at some options. And we talked about everything from shutting it down to going to private provider. In a nutshell, we've got to bump up the CDO drivers' salaries. And we've talked about it today. Dave's on here. For us to get to what our competition is around us at Gaddiston, Scottsboro and surrounding areas, we're gonna have to be at the $15 an hour starting pay for CDO drivers. And I think we're 1253 now, Patrick, is that right?
1235.
1235. We can't compete with them, you know. The benefits that we offer are great, but you know, people with two kids at home and a wife, they can't spend those benefits. We, I feel that we're in an emergency situation. I'm just gonna call it that. If we don't bump up our salaries, our CDO drivers, we're gonna have to shut down because we just can't do it. Patrick doesn't have people to do it now. Equipment's gonna have to be addressed and that's gonna be coming up with the next budget for sure. And you know, we, I don't know what else to take. We've got to do it or we're gonna have to consider shutting down some of the services we've got. So consensus coming out of the meeting yesterday was we're gonna have to move those CDO drivers up eight steps to get to a starting pay of our competition. So let that sink in a minute. We're eight steps away. Our people that have been there for 20 years are that far away from the starting pay on most of these places. So I'm to the point now, I'm gonna make a motion that we increase the CDO driver rates by eight spots or eight steps. And I think we decided that for the remainder of this calendar year or fiscal year, we're gonna need the adjustment of $68,000. And of course, you know, this will roll over to the next budget, we'll take that into consideration. But if we don't do this, I don't have anything to take. You know, it's either do it or shut down and go another route. So I'm gonna make that motion.
I'm gonna do it now. You wanna talk, discuss it more on item seven? You wanna go ahead and do it now? Okay, motion. Motion by John, second by Phillip to, for the budget adjustment to $68,000?
I would add that in that meeting yesterday, we talked about the fact that the, you know, we went up on the rates and that will account for next year's budget. You know, some of that increase would be in that increase of the rates, so.
30%, yeah, 30% is compounded over the next couple of years. We should be, it'll take part of the staying of that away from us for sure.
Motion second on four, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we did another motion for the adjustment. This is just for the 68,000. Are we gonna include it all together in one motion? All together, okay. So that motion for 68,000 and to raise it up the steps that we need to be complying, okay? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. So we did it all in one favor too. Okay, John?
I've known it to quit raining basically. Then he's kinda stopped. He's got other things he does and parked back in there and gets on up on some other things. But fish is starting on the little building just to see if we get about a week of good weather. Weatherman keeps throwing curve bottles at us.
I too, just echo John's sentiments on the condition of the sanitation department. I forgot to take my garbage out one week and it piled up. And I was really getting nervous of what I'm gonna do with this trash. And when I did take it out, I just thought, well, it's good to have someone to pick this up because if it wasn't there, I would've been in bad shape. So I don't know if we think about that a lot, but if we don't have these guys, it will be a mess very quickly. So sometimes we overlook them, but that's an important department. So I'm just glad we're able to do something to help them.
Well, I can tell you Walter, that if we didn't have those guys, that your phone and my phone would be ringing a whole lot more when garbage is not picked up. So I really appreciate what these guys do and I think we need to make sure they're taken care of and that we stay competitive. And as John said, you know, it's hard to get folks to come and I mean, one guy came and worked a week. I can't, I can't, I can't do it. Can't make it. So I think it's a smart move in the right direction.
I plan to save, plan to save your head for next, next budget we work on. You know, we've got trucks now that Patrick was telling yesterday that you gotta hold two wires together before it'll do something. And you got one that won't go into reverse that you're having to use, so. And my remark was, well, Kyle Ocean telling you're holding two wires together and driving a truck that won't go into reverse and see what they tell you. So we got some needs we gotta address coming up.
I just wanna to say how much I appreciate Patrick and the work he's done and putting all this stuff together and checking all this stuff. Kudos to you that getting out there and checking all this stuff out and making sure that everything's done.
Well, I appreciate that. I just want everybody to understand, this isn't something we put together overnight. This is something we've been working on for several years now. And so the fact that this is finally coming to fruition on behalf of the sanitation department, I just wanna thank the council, I wanna thank the mayor and Don's not even here, I'm gonna thank the HR manager too. It's, it was needed two years ago and I was gonna do it, like John said, either do it or shut down services. Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
I know there's other departments who are just kinda looking, oh boy, they gave them something, so we'll be next. One thing that made it a little bit easier for me is because we have a plan to bring in some revenue from that. So we're hoping that's gonna actually subsidize it and take care of it. So rather than us stealing money from that and putting it somewhere else, hope that that could stand alone and this will just help them do that. So it's a little bit easier. Our next task may be a little bit more difficult because we got to find some way to make this, these proceeds. So I know we're working, Lynn's working on something right now, the fire department trying to work with those guys and maybe a little bit more difficult because we just don't have that pot of money. But anyway, we're not going to shirk that responsibility. We will look at it and try to do our very best. So thanks a lot. Move right along. Ordinances and resolutions, second reading ordinance 2020-8 establishing a speed limit for 45, 45th Street to 55th Street on God Avenue north to 35 miles per hour and establishing a school zone with a speed limit of 35 miles per hour during school. This is the second reading. Anybody in opposition to this? I undertake a motion to accept.
Second.
Second by Lynn, all in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five is resolution 21-19 granting tax abatements to Plasman Corporation. Jim, is gonna speak to that?
I might come out here for these because it means a lot more to our community. This is for Plasman, which is located down on Maryport Road. They initially opened up their operation in April of 2010. And at that time, to kind of give you an idea, unemployment was 12.9% today is 44.9%. John, watch all are going through every industry and Fort Payne is going through that. I think all of them, we need 40 people, we need 40 people. And it's just hard to find these guys. And hopefully that will change if some of these federal funds are eliminated and people are receiving. I was looking the other day, 365 for your federal government or federal funds they receive plus another $300. And that right there is equivalent to $15 an hour. So it's something all the industries and companies are facing right now. This project is basically buying new equipment. And again, it's hard to do anything but get more jobs. Hopefully it will create a mission to some jobs around. But it's just hard to create jobs right now. But the total investment, capital investment is $6,498,000. So that's more money coming into our community. Means they can produce more. They produce injection plastic molding for Nissan, Toyota, Honda, General Motors. So they cover a wide area of automotive companies. They are asking for the sales tax abatement, which again, there's nothing, just a non-educational abatement. That's what costs the city annually about, let's see what, I'm sorry. About $64,000, excuse me, $97,000. I'm sorry, $64,000. $64,000 abatement for that. They do it for around 300 people, so. And when you make an investment of this amount, what it shows me is they're planning on saving here. And you know, they're committed to Fort Payne. And we've seen a lot of companies investing this year in their facilities, which hopefully that will be saved here for a long time. The property tax abatement would be initially the first year, $6,200. And at the end of the 10-year, property tax abatement of $1,700 in the last year for a total of $42,000 over a 10-year period.
That sales tax, this is one time?
The sales tax is one time, I'm sorry, $64,000. And this is over a 10-year period, again, it increases each year as the property value goes down. And hopefully there'll be, you know, some more expansions taking place in the near future there. I'll take any questions. And one other thing that we're doing right now, we're in the process of doing is a new wage and salary survey. This is something that we have done in the past, we probably had enough money to go back and do it again along with Cherokee, Dev, Marshall, Jackson, Campbell, all of those went together to do this way, hourly survey. And when it's completed, we will provide y'all the competition survey so you can have a seat, what competition, what life before.
I certainly appreciate it. Thank y'all very much.
So moved.
Phillip? John, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
If I'll get back to our infrastructure, we're about to be under strain. Since the few months we've been out here, we've had several busy expansions and people announcing they're gonna build retail and restaurants in Fort Payne. We better get ready now.
Item six is discussion of speed tables on Hawa'ata Drive Northwest and Echo's Drive West.
Yeah, we had some calls about Hawa'ata Drive. Lots of children playing over on that street. David has also had lots of calls and he talked with the residents over there and actually has a letter that all of them have signed that they're in agreement. And I think you said probably two over on Hawa'ata Drive needs to be speed tables, like wanted the speed tables put in. On Echo's Drive, I was in a meeting with Plasman a week or so ago. And now that the Kudzu Window Business is behind them, they, Plasman has a warehouse out beside, on the other side of the street of them. And they, they use forklifts going back and forth, taking equipment over to that warehouse. And they said when the Kudzu Window Factory lets out, their folks are, you know, come flying down that hill or whatever. And he's afraid that there'll be some, you know, accident over there. I have spoken with Kudzu Window and they've told their folks to slow down. But David and I rode over there and he recommended putting two speed tables on that road to, right before you get to the Window Place and right past coming out of Echo's Drive to where it's that area there that they move the forklifts back and forth over to the Plasman.
Is there a certain speed limit that we need to have where we have these things or is it 35?
Fifteen dollars per hour over the speed table itself. Regulations say that it has to be in an area that speed limit's already below 45 miles per hour.
Hello?
Both of these are. So then when you put them on, you have to put the yellow signs as fifteen dollars per hour. You can still drive 35 dollars per hour.
But I'm working, paid one time.
They're, they're orange signs, so they can't grab your tickets to drive very fast. I recommend everybody drive there.
Rodney, what's, what's the liability concern today? Is there something we should be concerned about?
The state changes there. The state changes there rules periodically. At one point they were taking out even rumble spritz because anything that can cause a disconnection between the tire and the road, they consider a danger. I don't think there's any question that at some point on some of these tables that we're gonna have somebody not paying attention or under the influence or something of that nature, they're gonna hit it at about 35 or 40 miles an hour and injure themselves or get killed and we're gonna get sued. We've done a great job marking the one up at the church, in front of the church, which I tried out one time to see how bad it was. It was pretty bad. But anyway, the, so ultimately, we're probably gonna get it sued at some point. I really think if we do continue to do as good a job marking it as we're marking as we are doing, then we're probably not gonna lose. But it's just one of those things that at some point, somebody's gonna make a claim.
The Federal Highway Administration is the one that regulates the spacing, the size, all that. If you get on their website, it's under the traffic comment division. And you can read all the criteria that they recommend and put on there. And we kinda go above that on some things. We've been thinking solid and that seems to be better. They don't require that, but it does help people. And we had to go back and redo a couple of them to exactly meet the criteria. They're all legal now.
The one legal one I had.
Motion about this?
Wait.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I'd like to just say something. One thing about those there on Echo's Drive, and I don't know if you talked to Kudzu about that, but they manufacture windows and transport those out on trucks. And I don't know what effect that might have on, you know, their cargo. And this might be something you might wanna discuss with them a little bit more. And then also Plasman does have all their racking systems up close to the road. It makes it hard for people to see anything, the forklifts drivers. So maybe talk to them about shifting some of their racking systems back. I would talk to Kudzu about that, about how, what effect it would have on their transportation.
Yeah, I actually think, I mean, we could probably do without putting the two there. If we put up signage and put a, you know, a speed limit, you know, designate a speed limit in that area.
Do you think they'd just run it?
You could always try.
Yeah, you could, you could try and see.
Just something that, I mean, the speed tables that were in place, there's like a corridor for the forklifts, they don't, because you don't want forklifts going over the speed tables, so. So, it was just a corridor. I mean, you've got probably a, just guessing.
Just add to that, someone had asked me about Tenth Street and, um, Alabama. If you could look at that, I mean, they were asking for a speed table, I was like, why don't we just do stop sign? You know, so, north. They just fly down, they're just saying there's, they fly down that road and there's been several accidents, but.
Yeah, I would, I would be in, in favor of doing stop signs there, uh, Echo's Drive and, and just seeing if that, you know, seeing if that helps, put a stop sign up and designate that as, you know, their loading zone or.
So, you want Phillip's motion to be stop signs at Echo Drive and speed tables at High Wathah Drive? That's second, Phillip's got, he made motions, so, motion by Phillip, second by Johnny, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Check on that other one and let me know what I, if I need to get them to sign something or whatever.
Do you wanna look at changing the speed limit on that?
I would recommend, we're gonna do this, I'd recommend changing the speed limit for Echo's to put that thing off, the whole thing.
I moved, can we do it?
They have to be done by ordinance, we have to draw that up.
One big place prior to the, if you turn off the airport, the drive to the, to the left, one there, and then the other, when you're coming from, the, the glass company, right where, to the left, that is where the forklifts are coming out. So, one there and then one on the other, you know, I can, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll map it out and.
Center in the highway, forklift center in the highway.
Okay, since Echo Drives have been changed to next meeting, I guess that motion would just be for a High Wathah Drive speed table. Phillip, give me your motion for that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, item eight is, uh, curbing requests, Amy Jo Hill at four sixty Elm Street. She, she applies, Johnny, motion by Johnny.
Second.
Second by Lynn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's report.
Uh, we've got one more thing on the, the agenda that was not, that was not put on there, the, um, authorized bids for the sewer pump that we agreed to do.
I moved.
And second by Johnny.
Really need that, yeah.
Pumps that we have already talked about, that we have to clean out the.
It's, it's to replace the portable pump that were ringing, but then the character deals plus Tim can use it, man, whole malfunctions and whatnot, so it's, the paper itself versus what we're running.
We have motion second on that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, just wanted to give a quick update on the golf course, uh, we did get that leased, uh, their first day was Saturday, May first. Uh, I talked with Daryl this morning and he said they had a great, it was better than, better than expected day on Saturday and said they were so busy Sunday that he couldn't keep the carts washed enough to keep everybody in them, so, uh, he was well pleased with that. And it, I think it's a great, great move to, uh, to get, get people play golf again, so, uh, kudos to him and, uh, hope he stays really busy. Um, I did, this morning, I went and did a proclamation for International Firefighters Day. Uh, today is International Firefighters Day, so, if you see any firefighters, uh, tell them how much you appreciate them, for putting their job, putting their life on the line and, uh, and being out there for the public. Uh, just wanted to, to speak to the, the speed situation, you know, we had, I've had a lot of calls on, on people speeding, uh, and, and I don't know if it's, I think a lot of people are avoiding Highway eleven and all the, the ruts and, and stuff. So, there's a lot more traffic on the back streets, for example, on Grand and Alabama and Forest, uh, Godfrey, and there's, just tends to be a lot of speeding that, that I've noticed and, and that I've had reports of. I'd just like to encourage folks to slow down, especially watch for children playing. Uh, there's, there's a lot of neighborhoods that, there's, there's kids out playing and, uh, you know, I encourage people to watch for that kinda stuff. Uh, had several calls on Scenic Road, uh, for traffic, uh, David and I have, have went out there and, and looked and, and gonna have some recommendations for, for that, uh, that highway, uh, for the residents out there. There's a few places out there that's, that's bad about, uh, speeding, so, we'll be doing that. Also, wanted to remind everybody that July the sixteenth through the eighteenth is the back-to-school holiday tax-free weekend, so, make your plans for that, uh, July sixteenth through the eighteenth. Uh, Walter had alluded to the police department, we did, we have done the feasibility study. We were in a meeting this week, last week, uh, that, um, kinda give the, the final plans of what they have come up with, with this feasibility study. This will be presented to the full council, I think at a work session on the twelfth, which is a week from, week from Wednesday. So, um, look forward to seeing that, we'll have, should have a cost estimate of, of what their feasibility study would, has, you know, has found. It's really exciting looking at, you know, the, the different plans that they've come up with and, uh, knowing that, you know, we're, we're in a place in, in that police department that, that we gotta do something. Uh, I mean, it's, it's been, been let go and been let go for, for many years and, and, you know, we, we've gotta do something there, so. Uh, that, that's exciting to see, so, look forward to, uh, seeing those, that outcome, so, and that's all I've got.
Counsel, we had to, we had to, uh, just we need a budget adjustment too, it's, it's a small one for five hundred and twenty-five dollars. They had to do for the study to get us a cost after they did it, so, somebody's gonna do a study to say, okay, Craig said he usually hits it about three hundred thousand dollars, so, you know, our, our team's gonna say, okay, it looks good, how much is it? So, they can give us that, how much is it? The whole idea for this, this, this package, for us to decide how we're going to do it, so, all this plan is, is here's what it looks like, you guys determine how you're gonna make it happen, so, anyway, that study will come, the, the cost of that will come also with it, but we, we're not tied to that. So, just want you guys to know that we spent five hundred and twenty-three dollars.
I'd like to. Motion by Lynn to approve that five hundred, second by Johnny, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?